Call the order. Thank you, everybody for coming. It's nice to see some folks here. So, welcome to the commission meeting, City of Venter, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Start with the flag, soldier.
Thank you.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Langraff, Mayor Langraff is absent.
You. Our open public meetings announcement pursuant to the open public meetings adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website, www.vendercity.org. One other meeting announcement, the meeting announcement livestream slash remote comment disclosure is listed in our agenda. And I just want to take one minute before we have a brief presentation for a moment of silence for a Venter resident and Venter lifeguard Quinn Adina, who we lost tragically early this week, and our hearts go out to his parents, Michael Adina and Claudia Adina, who are people we all know in the community and the whole community aches for their loss. The visitation is tomorrow at ten AM at Winburg in Linwood. But I just want to express my heartfelt condolences as well, moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have one presentation tonight. It is a of the effort of a lot of hard work with, this is a mouthful, from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Accreditation Commission. Right? Also known as NJSACPAC. So we have the director, Harry Doggato here, and he has a, I'd like him to call him forward if you could and speak to the group. If you have, if you have a minute, and then we're all very proud of the chief and the department, and it isn't just a it's, it's, it's just, it's not just knowing that the work that has to be done, it's the actual execution of it that I think we're most proud of. They're, they're following this.
And also the fact that the policewoman has done it for so long, so just to add context of what I'm about to say about your police department. So there's about three hundred agencies in the state of New Jersey, a little bit over, that have actually made it, you know, one time to this accreditation process. Because it's rigorous, it's a hundred and twelve standards that you have to meet, many of which require multiple proofs of compliance. So fifty-four percent of those, I made it once, thirty-two percent, I made it twice. When you say, when you look at those that made it three times to the program, that's dropped to nineteen percent. Four times, less than eight percent, seven point eight nine. The Venter City Police Department forcing to a elite group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that made it five times, putting them in an elite group of less than three percent, what, three point six percent of all the agencies in the state of New Jersey that are accredited. So it's consistency and it's the commitment over the years that have actually made them stand, stand out. So if you indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. This was probably made for Joss, for the chief's height, not mine. So the Venter City Police Department has once again made a commitment to adhering to best practices at the state and national level in a highly regarded statewide law enforcement accreditation program. This program administered to the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission has failed to transparently demonstrate the professionalism and preparedness of state's law enforcement agencies. The New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Accreditation Program is purposefully designed to enhance professionalism and transparency in the state's public safety system. Now, during these uniquely challenging times and a threat to our life and safety, encouraging law enforcement agencies to follow standardized practices and policies is a potentially life-saving and cost-effective investment of time and resources. Accreditation gives an agency a preparedness plan and a verification of excellence. Accreditation status represents a significant professional achievement. In the Venter City Police Department, following best practices has become part of their culture. It's the way they deliver police services to their citizens. So this March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, the Verno City Police Department received its prestigious reaccredited status for a fifth time. It demonstrates the chief's, chief's Fussner firm commitment to maintain my credit status to remain on track with state and national standards and the continued expectations for quality, professional and ethical policing. Now, Verno Police Department believes in the foundation of accreditation, which, as I mentioned before, lies in the adoption of a hundred and twelve standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. The agency adheres to accreditation as a progressive and time-proven way of helping them calculate and improve their overall performance. The Venter City Police Department has been carefully measured against an established set of state and national standards. And in many instances, I'm proud to say they have exceeded accepted practices in the field to law enforcement. And officers, government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. And officers in accredited agencies certainly can take pride that they have been objectively measured and recognized for their professionalism and adherence to the highest standards. Now, after the three years, there's an onsite visit, as we call it, as a final assessment. And in it, we certainly look for things just to make sure that over the, over those three years, all these and there's a few hundred proofs of compliance that need to be demonstrated are demonstrated. I must say that the Venter City Police Department had an excellent final assessment. And I'll just paraphrase out of a report that is forwarded to me, and then it goes to the commission, which is what the Venerable Police Department was able to participate on March fourteenth. Under the leadership of Chief Joseph Fussner, the Venter City Police Department demonstrates a high level of competence, leadership and professionalism. It is the opinion of the assessment team that the Venerable City Police Department is a highly professional and committed agency, which exemplifies all of the tenants of law enforcement accreditation at the state and national level. So it is indeed my honor here today on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission to congratulate Chief Joseph Fussner, Accreditation Manager Lieutenant David Gackel, the members of the Venter City Police Department, the mayor, the council and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving their fifth reaccreditation, joining a very, very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that have made this important commitment to excellence in policing. So to all, indeed, congratulations. This is where you get the clap. Want to send it to you with certificate for the fifth time? So it's all yours now, chief, you earned it, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Doggara. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it, thanks. So, so moving on with our workshop portion, we, we have no department head reports. We have no capital discussion. And then we will move it to minutes. This is our, our workshop session, and then we'll have a time for public comment at the end of this session and at the end of the main session. So we'll have minutes, both of us were here for that, so that we, we can, we can both approve minutes from our January twenty fifth and February twenty second meetings. We have no ordinance introductions, but we have a number of adoptions of previous ordinances that we went through at the last meeting. So I don't know if there's any reason to go through them, but I'll list them. We have an ordinance adopting a green purchasing policy. We have an ordinance that we, and these are adopt for adoption, so we did the discussion at the last meeting. We have an ordinance that introduced the salary ranges for the entire city. We had an ordinance that dissolved the ad hoc committee for no reason other than it was becoming less of, of a, of a attended committee meeting. And the, the meeting, the committee themselves felt as though they were communicated in a, on a good way with the, with the city. If we choose to bring it back, if they ask to bring it back, we will. We had an ordinance setting salaries for lifeguards, and this was something that we did a lot of research with to make ourselves competitive with other cities to get high-quality lifeguards. And then we had an ordinance preparing us for traffic, no parking on street ends, which is to be adopted so that we can go forward with making the street ends more unified and the ordinance unifies them. So then we will go into resolutions and contracts by consent. So the first the first resolution will be authorizing service agreement with CM three for HVAC maintenance services for Venerable City Municipal Building and Public Works Facility. And the second one is tied to that if which is services for the community center annual, these are annual contracts that we do every year. If, Rick, if you have any other comment you want to add to that, other than it's basically and CM three has been a trusted supplier for that, they, they always seem to be able to have a get, get, get their answers we need quickly and the services we need quickly. The next resolution will be regarding no parking and bikes on the boardwalk for events that are run by the JCC. So there are marathon events and runs on April seventh, June first and October nineteenth. So this is codifying the no bikes or boardwalks for that time, and we push out on social media so that people aren't, so that fewer people are on the boardwalk when those events happen. There are huge events that take over almost the entire boardwalk for certain periods of time. The next resolution is oh nine five. That will be authorizing enforcement and no parking within the city from April first to June thirtieth. So this is our three-month, every-year kind of maintenance of things that take shape when we have emergencies, things of that nature. So again, this is kind of a housekeeping ordinance. And then we have a change order for improvements for Marshall Avenue Dudley and the Heights on Oxford Avenue, Streetscape. This is a fairly large project that is coming to an end, this is the final contract, final contract amounts for that with some change orders. Give you any comments on that or on that project? I think it's, it's kind of at the tail end of, right, almost done. Then we'll have a resolution regarding approving rates, charges and fees for twenty twenty four for the Recreation Department. There's really no changes in the fees. In this case, they're more in the addition of services. So we're adding a number of different camps, CSI camp, a marine science camp, a soccer camp. So there's no real, the, our biggest, most popular camp, which is the sports camp, is no, no change in fees there. Did you have any other comments to that? It's pretty basic, but it's nice to know that we're adding. And to that effect, we're still looking for surf camp. So if anybody, anybody wants to be a surf camp coach in the audience, stand up. We also have, so the next ordinance is awarding Palestinian associates for the design bidding and construction for a new generator at Public Works. So this isn't the construction portion of it. This is for replacement and redesign for a new generator and the Public Works complex, correct? So and then we have the Public Works Forward Agenda today. This is a, a, per, authorizing, a zero nine nine is authoring the purchase of an F one fifty pickup truck for the water sewer department under state contract, which is something that we all have to do. And then ordinance is number one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four and one oh five are all tax abatements for homes throughout the city, one on twenty-four South Hillside, one on nine South Cornwall, one on sixty-seven thirteen Atlantic, another on Atlantic, sixty-seven eleven Atlantic, eight South Melbourne and nine twelve North Harbor. So these are all tax abatement, which is, I think, a program that in the end benefits the city and keeps the momentum of building brisk. So then then we have a resolution zero, one zero six, which is extending our interlocal agreement with Longport for the sharing of code officials for an additional three months.
Can I address that briefly? What, what this resolution does is actually terminates the existing contract upon three months' notice. We had looked at this in the off-season as we were preparing the budget and didn't feel that the construction office really was positioned anymore to continue to provide the service to Longport at the level that we were doing and at the cost that we were providing it. So we entered into negotiations with Longport with an eye towards terminating the service. This was, this three-month agreement is intended to give them a transition period to be able to either hire their own staff or third party or, or something else. But we're going to wean them off of getting the service from us at a substantially increased monthly rate. This is going to pay us ten thousand dollars a month for those three months. Previously, the contract paid forty-six thousand for the whole year. So this is to our benefit for both financially and in the long run to make sure that our office, our construction office is able to keep up with the workload that they have just servicing Venter properties. Because as you all know, there's been a lot of construction activity. And the more time we spend in Longport, the more time it takes us to do our own work. So I think this is going to be an improvement, both in efficiency for the department and also financially for the city.
So it's Venter first as far as capacity goes, and, and that's what this ordinance does, it makes sure that our, our department
Right, we intend to maintain, this was done very amicably, and we both agree in the future to still help each other on an as-needed basis. If something happens, you know, we're going to be there for each other tonight. This is, this is not in any way an adversarial relationship.
All right, thank you. To that related is that within the Code Enforcement Office, Resolution one zero seven appoints provisionally Dino Cavallieri to the title of Construction Official effective April first.
Right, and, and as mentioned at the last meeting, that's due to the retirement of Jimmy Agnesino, whose last day, I guess, is actually tomorrow. He's retired effective April first, and Dino is now going to be the new construction official.
Great. So that brings us to the one zero eight, which is a resolution awarding the Venter Avenue signal, Venter Avenue signal synchronization project to Ferriazi Concrete. So this is this is in Venter Avenue, and I did sit in on a meeting months ago when this was being proposed. So it's a traffic signal and intersection improvements to, to all the intersections on the Atlantic City side of Dorset Avenue that had not been done by the county so far. So this is Oxford, Victoria, Weymouth, Nashville, Baton Rouge, all along Venter Avenue. The designs and controls will be similar to the county project that was completed last year. So the, the ADA ramps and but we were, we, we improved the drainage, some of those were done without proper proper sort of thought to drainage and also the streetscape around them. A lot of those have poles in the center of them that have, that have these new boxes around them. So they, the, the companies have spent some time to make sure that there's the, the traffic, the pedestrian traffic flow is and I think it's going to be attractive, too. Some of them actually create bump outs that I think will calm traffic a little bit on the corners and help people not park in the twenty, twenty, twenty-foot zones on the corners and be, and have the same sight impaired facilities in the, as you hit the button, then it tells you when to cross and when not to cross. So that's the ordinance, and it is not to exceed two million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. And then we're adding at the bench, are there any questions about that? We're, we're adding at the bench appointment of Roger McLaren to be our zoning official, right? Roger does a lot of, works at the, on the planning board and is a huge wealth of knowledge. He's constantly working, I get emails from him on Sundays when he's reviewing plans, he's a great, he'll be a great asset to have, to have more, to have alongside the rest of that team.
And this vacancy is also created by Jimmy Agnesino's retirement. He was, he was the construction official and zoning officer, so.
Right, so that's good, so, so we are, we're I'm a big, big fan of Rogers. Then we'll have approval of minutes of, of bills and payroll, any discussion items. And now I'll open to the public any comment on any of the things that we've enumerated so far. There'll be a time at the end of the, of the regular meeting, once we open it, that, to speak about anything you like about the the city or any matter you have in mind to speak of. But this is a moment just for things that we've already spoken about so far. If anybody has a public comment, please stand and give your name and address. Seeing none, Jim, do you have any in the?
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak or comment on any of the items that have been discussed or have been voted upon? Please make yourself known in the chat feature by raising your hand, and I will unmute you.
No.
No? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public portion for the workshop. Okay, to open the okay, and I'll call
I'm sorry, before you do, we said, we're, we're trying to like whisper here, I'm just going to ask you the question. Your appointment of the zoning officer should be provisional appointments, it's competitive or?
It's a competitive title, so when I put it into camps, we will put him as provisional, and Roger will
I just wanted to be clear because the resolution didn't specifically have provisional in it.
Well, so
Should we amend that before it's adopted?
So we have two things, if, if moving forward, if Roger's going to be this position full-time for years ahead, then I would say let's, we can add provisional into the title.
It'll be part-time.
Right, that's, it doesn't matter, part-time and full-time, so provisional. If this is only going to be a temporary thing, he could be in there as a temporary appointment for six months and then another temporary appointment for six months.
We're hoping he's going to be here for ten years.
So then I would put him in camps as provisional.
Okay, so we can just on the fly, when you do that resolution, can we just insert that word before you vote on it? Everybody understand, we're good?
To provisional zoning officer. Is that where we?
Provisional appointment.
Appointment, yep.
Provisional appointment. Where did we that, oh, point for, okay, provisional appointment of that's a workshop for you.
In the now, therefore, at the end, just
Do a point provisional, I see.
Because it's a competitive item.
Okay. So when we get to that in our so we can still, so that's, that, that is by
So it'll be by consent?
By consent, so
So we're just
Should we pull it out, or is it okay to just by consent?
We're doing it on the record that it's
Great, so just include that number. Got it.
Twenty twenty four to one, twenty twenty four dash one nine.
And one oh nine.
Will now pre-resignation of the city of Venter County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, appointing provisionally Roger McLaren zoning officer effective April one, twenty twenty four.
Yes.
Right.
Excellent.
Okay, so we should call the order of the regular meeting? All right. All right. Motion to call the order, all in favor to call the order, the regular portion of the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes? I have a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
No ordinance introductions. Next is, can I have a motion to have public hearing on ordinance zero zero four, ordinance of the city of Venerable State of Atlantic adopting green purchasing policy?
I'll make the motion as described.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any any comments from the off, from the, from the, from the gallery or from Zoom?
For this and the next couple ordinance that are being introduced, after Commissioner Kribel announces that it's a public hearing, if anybody on Zoom wishes to speak or comment on the ordinance, please make yourself known in the chat feature by raising your hand, and I will unmute you.
Thanks, Jim, there's a, there's a handful of these coming, so. Hearing none.
And, and just to be clear, these are public hearings, so this is the last opportunity.
So this is in the green purchasing policy, the last, last public hearing. Hearing none, I motion to close public hearing on ordinance zero zero four.
Motion.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
And taking action on ordinance zero zero four, I have a motion to adopt ordinance zero zero four, green purchasing policy.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Lisa, roll call?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
And item twenty-two is a public hearing on ordinance zero zero five, the establishing salary ranges for twenty twenty four for the city of Venerable Officers and Employees and replacing all ordinance or part of ordinance heretofore adopted, the provision of which are inconsistent herewith. Motion to open for public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no comments, I'll make motion to close public portion on here, on ordinance zero zero five.
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then taking action on ordinance zero zero five, I will motion to adopt ordinance zero zero five on salary compensation and salary ranges for two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Okay, next ordinance for a public hearing is ordinance zero zero six, city of Venter County of Atlantic, replacing ordinance twenty eighteen zero two five, an ordinance creating an ad hoc committee for the city of Venter. And ordinance twenty eighteen zero three one, ordinance mending same, also known as chapter twenty-two of the code of the city. Motion to open public hearing on this ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, I motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is ordinance adoption, so make a, can I have a motion to adopt ordinance zero zero six repealing the ad hoc committee?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
And next is ordinance public hearing on ordinance zero zero seven, ordinance city of Venter County of Atlantic, setting salaries, wages and compensations for the member of the Venerable City lifeguards. So this is public hearing, motion to open for public hearing.
Motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Quiet. Motion to close public hearing on ordinance zero zero seven.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And taking action now on ordinance zero zero seven for the compensation of members of the Venerable City lifeguards, motion to adopt.
Motion.
I'll second, roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Okay. Like one more here, two more. Next is ordinance zero zero eight, amending chapter two one four of the code of the city of Venerable entitled Vehicles and Traffic, specifically sex Amending chapter two one four, the code of the City of Ventnor, entitled vehicles and traffic, specifically section one four dash two nine, entitled schedule one, no parking, motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero zero eight.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, I motion to close public hearing on ordinance zero zero eight.
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, next is, uh, ordinance two thousand twenty-four zero zero eight, amending chapter two one four, uh, entitled vehicles, tra- and traffic, specifically two fourteen dash two twenty-nine, entitled schedule one, no parking. Uh, I'd like a motion to adopt ordinance zero zero eight.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
I'll second. Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, may I just make a, a quick point here, just for, for the record and hopefully for the public, there's, there's been, I understand, some uh, misinformation reported about the, uh, effect of this ordinance. I think there was a report that indicated it was gonna create uh, two new parking spaces on every block. That, that, that's not accurate. Uh, what we represented and what we stand by is that this is intended to just create some uniform uh, rules for each block for the purpose of, uh, enforcement consistency and also to just kind of clean up some of the, uh, mismatch of painting on different streets, being painted in different ways. Uh, the reality was, I think, that it'll create two additional parking spaces citywide.
Citywide.
It wasn't every street. So, uh, it wasn't really designed to create parking spaces. It was designed to kind of just clean it up and make it consistent from one block to the next.
Right. Yeah. And for, for my part, I think it's, uh, uh, and we spoke with some other residents about it to make, uh, we needed to do this paperwork in order to get it, uh, in, in order to, to, to enforce it correctly and to have the, um, the, the painting, the uniforms. What hasn't changed is that we need, um, uh, we need ample room for, uh, public safety vehicles to turn around, so they're not forced to, to, to back out of it, of those street ends. Uh, it's staging for public safety. These things haven't changed. Um, and it also allows handicapped, um, people to be dropped off and picked up at street ends on the beach during the summer. So those dynamics of the street ends haven't changed. Um, we're just, um, trying to codify it in one in one fell swoop. So, yeah. So thank you for clarifying. And it's adopted. Um, so moving forward, resolutions, um, we need a motion to adopt by consent, resolutions two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine two to two thousand twenty-four dash zero one zero eight and one zero nine. So I need a motion to adopt by consent.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Second. And roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was mouthful. Next is, uh, approval of bills and payroll. Uh, Amy, uh, I have a motion, uh, to, um, could, Amy, can you, uh, supply bills and payroll?
Payables for this period is two million three hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred ten dollars, eighty cents. Payrolls for this period, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Okay. Excellent. Motion to approve bills and payroll?
I'll make the motion.
I will second. Lisa, roll call?
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
All right. We have, uh, no announcements or safety reports. Uh, Commissioner Mento, do you have any comment or report?
I have no report tonight.
Okay. Neither do I. We've got school board estimate went smoothly today and, um, I think we're all, um, um, proud of the, the school and the work they do. It's a, 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 a big hurdle. I have no other comments, but we, uh, will have a motion to open. Oh.
I just wanted to put on the record that letters went out today to all, uh, registered voters in district three and put on the record that their voting location has changed. Will no longer be at the school. It will be located over at our library, but in the nutrition site, so it's closer to Newport Avenue. The letters did go out today, so people in district three should be receiving those letters probably within the next couple of days.
Mm-hmm. And we should get, uh, uh, social media push on that as well, because a lot of people don't look at social media, but a lot, a lot of people look at, um, at both. So we'll, I'll make sure we get on that, uh, because it's coming soon, right?
Yes.
Um, any other, uh, comments or reports?
Nope.
So I, uh, motion to open for public comment on anything that any, um, residents or, or guests here would like to speak about? Motion to open for public comment?
Make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any comments from the public about anything at all?
I have Nicole Jacoby would like to speak. I just asked her on mute.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Nicole Jacoby. Uh, I'm a twelve-year resident. I live on Edgewater Avenue. Um, we, my husband, Lambros, and I were local business owners. We own the grand, um, brand Greens and Grains. Uh, I came on here last year around this time. We're concerned parents. Uh, like I said, we lived on, we live on Edgewater Ave. Um, Edgewater Ave is a very, very highly trafficked street year-round, but especially in the summer. Um, it's five blocks from Dorset Ave to Surrey Ave and these people just drive and pick up speed as they're going down Edgewater Avenue. It is very, very dangerous for children, pedestrians. We have some handicapped children in our neighborhood. Um, it's gotten worse progressively. Uh, I'm trying to get to the bottom of what we can do as far as um, getting some flashing stop signs, it, just one at least, either on Oxford or Somerset, which is in the middle of, you know, the five blocks, uh, to force people to stop because they turn onto Edgewater and they pick up speed for five blocks and they either speed around Somerset, which is, um, you know, a one-way, or they speed down Surrey and, you know, last year I came on and, uh, you guys did send a few police officers out, I guess, to, you know, ticket people. But that's not a solution. And, you know, I have a five-year-old here and I have a four-month-old here. And, um, you know, I really need to know what I need to do as a resident and a business owner and a mother to get a stop sign on the street. I know what we have on Monmouth now is probably a direct result of the same issue. Granted, Monmouth is a way longer stretch, but it doesn't diminish, you know, the issue that we have here. And not only that, people are constantly driving the wrong way. Now people are speeding. There's no one-way signage. There's no wrong-way signage. But the main thing, if they were forced to stop midway on these five blocks, we would have a lot less issues. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what the steps are that I can take.
So we're lucky enough to have the chief here, but I will respond in, to, to kick off, but thank you for, thank you for your comments. Um, and I agree, Edgewater is one of the most narrow streets in the city and it has a very, it's very difficult to navigate on a good day. Um, there are some intersections where there, there should be, I think, better signage for one-way and wrong-way there that have, because the, the traffic pattern, um, can in, can, can seem to allow you to go make a right, um, and head back towards Dorset Avenue when you cannot, and you should not. So I think we can do better on the wrong way and, and on the, uh, wrong way and no entry and one-way signage. We can look at that. Um, I can kick that to Public Works and to the Police Department, but, um, uh, being in this position for eight years, I've heard the, this type of a request a number of times and the city doesn't have control over stop sign locations and they can't be used for traffic calming. So stop signs are, are Department of Transportation issued and they have, um, they have to have certain requirements to have a stop sign added. So they're, they're, that, that, while that may s- seem like it's the, uh, uh, that it's something that you could add, I'll ask the chief to make more comment on that if you have any um, to, for traffic calming alternatives. We did put out, um, we did put out vehicles there, I remember, a couple of years ago to, to, to calm traffic, but I think, um, I think that's a, uh, a, an issue that's, you know, it happens on that, that particular block because people are trying to get around Dorset Avenue tra- traffic.
Yeah, it's, it's a long straightaway and not unique to, like you said, we get complaints about a lot of other parts of town. Um, you do not control speed by putting stop signs at intersections. That's been proven and, you know, it's not just a theory that we have here. That's a national standard. Um, what I would look to do, and, and Rick's here from Public Works, we have the speed radar signs that we see, um, throughout town.
Yeah.
Um, we do have the ability to, to place one. We just have to find, you know, a location where there maybe is a pole or some grass area that we can erect the pole.
So they're not stop signs. They're, they're actually radars that's saying you're, you're speeding, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Not only does it tell the driver of the vehicle what speed they're going, but it collects data for us to analyze over a period of time to show us what the maximum speed was, what's the average speed?
Right.
Times a day, um, you know, days of the week and, and so forth. So we will definitely look to, uh, to implement that. We have two other requests throughout town, so we'll have to prioritize and, and see what one is, uh, you know, more pressing for now, but we will get to that in a couple of weeks. We'll do a speed analysis essentially is what we'll do there.
So the, the, there is an intersection there that has, um, when you, when you, when you tee into Edgewater that, that has a frequent, um, that frequ- I think you mentioned that people go down the wrong way. Um, I, I think it's before Somerset and before Oxford. It's closer to Dorset Ave.
Derby.
Yeah, bur- what did, what did you say?
Derby.
Derby. Yeah. Derby Avenue, there's, um, it should say.
Derby's on, on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Derby's on the other side, right?
Dudley.
On Dudley.
Dudley.
Oh, Dudley. Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we, we had, I think you recall, um, Ed Stinson, the prior superintendent of Public Works, and I, we went out there um, probably close to a year and a half, two years ago, and we did a full analysis of that area and we erected some better signage. Um, particularly the complaints were coming out of Oxford Avenue, so traveling south on Oxford. Um, they were making the right-hand turn going towards Dorset. And we saw that there was a lack of some signage there and we, we added the do not enter and the one-way sign there. We can, you know, again, you know, Rick Chantaro and I can go out there, schedule an hour to go out there and do another, you know, walk around and see what signage is needed and some areas. And then, like I said, we'll put the, the radar.
Put the radar sign.
Sign, which will actually be a speed study, you know, that'll gather all the data for us and also acts as a deterrent because it displays the speed.
Yeah. So if there is a, if there is some, something else we're gonna take action on, this radar sign is, goes into, I guess it's called stealth mode and it actually just takes, it takes data. So we'll be able to know. And it'll make a case for, uh, for any other, any other.
Further study or, yeah, see what we, yeah, see what we need to do.
And then also to, to, to exacerbate it, there's, I think, at least three houses being, being constructed right now on that block.
That's, yeah. I, I, I'm actually hoping that's gonna prevent speeding. I don't mind the construction, um, but we live between Oxford and Somerset and if you need to put the radar in my front yard, you're welcome. I have no issue with that.
Well, what, what we'd look to do, we like to get it towards either halfway or about two thirty.
We're halfway, so.
If we put it down at Dudley, it's not really gonna serve a purpose because.
Yeah, we're literally exactly halfway because we're in the middle of Oxford and Somerset block, which is.
Probably looking probably somewheres, probably Suffolk Avenue, Somerset would be where we would look to put it. That would be the optimal locations.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll, we'll circle back. You can email me in, 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 uh, in a week or so, once we get this set up and we'll keep in touch, especially letting us know when your Greens and Grain is gonna open.
Yeah.
Because we love.
Memorial Day weekend, we're hoping we're still shooting.
Good. Wow. That's great. That's great. Congratulations. We're happy to have you there. I think it's gonna be a great location for you.
Starbucks has been holding the project up, just so everybody knows.
Oh, well, they gotta have another espresso and work a little harder.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Right. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, motion to close public comment.
Motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have no executive session requested or needed. And I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.